This is July 14th Bastille Day. In accordance with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, this meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com. Members of the public will not be able to physically attend. The meeting will be broadcast live on Comcast Channel 12 and can also be viewed via livestream on WHCA TV. It will be subsequently broadcast on youtube.com. And we'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll begin the meeting with a moment of silence. And we already basically announced that the meeting is being recorded and televised by the local cable company. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
Dan motions.
Brian second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, okay, real call, I keep forgetting. Justin?
Yes.
Brian? Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. A motion to accept correspondence in the lead file?
Dan motions.
Brian second.
Yay, Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Gus?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. A motion to approve the meeting minutes of the open session on May 26th.
Dan motions.
That's 2019. And Brian seconded it. Okay, any discussion?
Is that actually 2019?
Beats the heck out of me. Frank, do you know?
I'm checking right now.
No, the minutes begin with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending provisions of the Open Meeting Law.
So it would be 2020 then, alright. Okay. And Brian, you're seconding it?
Yes.
Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Open session on June 1st, 2020.
Motion, Dan.
Second, Brian.
Okay, any discussion? Randy?
Yes.
Dave, Daniel?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Town administrator's report and update on COVID-19, Frank?
Yeah, a couple of things. The town hall has resumed operations, including now accepting visitors by appointment. We've also resumed regular hours, so there are some of us who are once again enjoying the pleasure of being here on Tuesday night. The transition is going well. The selectmen voted based on a request at a last meeting to permit a soccer parade in August. After discussing with Chief Grenow and the Health Department, they do not feel that it would be prudent to have people gathering in a parade format in August. So I would like to ask that the board reconsider that action and I will reach out to the soccer folks and explain it to them.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to do so?
Do we need a motion to rescind our permission?
Yes.
For that parade? I'll make that motion.
I'll second that, Brian, with regret.
Any, any discussion? Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin? Justin?
Yes, I was muted.
Thank, thank you, Justin, and I'll vote yes as well.
No way to do that, Justin.
Alright, continue Frank.
The, we are participating in the COVID program with the Plymouth County. It now seems, I'm waiting to confirm this, but there was a state program providing, I believe the number is $235 per student for the schools to deal with COVID issues. What I'm now being advised is that that money will be coming from the COVID funds that each town in Plymouth County is eligible to receive from the 90 million that was granted to Plymouth County. I'm following up on that, but if so, it will restrict the amount of money available to the communities. But having said that, I don't believe it will negatively impact us because we were never in a position to spend the apportionment that would have been available to us based on need. We're not cutting corners, but we're not spending just because the money's there. So I'm going to follow up on that and I'll report when I, I have it back. I have a couple of other things, but they're more budget related, although they're tied to COVID, so that's what I have under the COVID update today.
Does anyone have any, any questions of Frank?
Frank, I have a question. I heard in the radio, I believe it was Manfield that received a million dollars out of the Plymouth County that fund. I'm not, I think it was Manfield, but, or Manfield, one of the two. But anyway, do you have an idea what the average amount for each town is drawing from that?
Well, it's different for each town, but the allocation was based, the phase one allocation was based on the population in each town. The phase two allocation, which is a much, much greater number, is based on the number of individuals in each town that had tested positive for COVID. Then the phase three number is based on the number of people that are in need in human services, that would be elderly veterans, et cetera. All of that information is on the web. I will certify the, their basic report sheet and the web link to the board, so you can actually look at it and I'll probably even put it on the website in case any of the citizens have an interest in it. But our, our allowance is something in excess of a million one. Bear in mind that that's going to include students at Whitman Hansen and our students at South Shore Oak.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good point Frank. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to budget review, Frank. We did, we did receive, we did receive a public comment that relates to the budget. And I, I think you guys have copies of it also, but I'll, I think it, it should be read into the, read into the record since he took the trouble to, to make it and call it a public comment. This is from Sean Kane. To the members of the Select Board, I respectfully ask that you sit or reaching out to your counterparts in Hansen to work out a resolution to the conflict surrounding the regional school agreement. The action taken at the last meeting to include Article 23 on their warrant, this is something that we'll talk about briefly, briefly later on, and to formally pursue a deregionalization committee is evidence of the discord among us. Personally, I believe that it will be in the best interest of the community, of the community, both Whitman and Hansen, to keep the 50-50 compromise this year and to use the coming months to update the regional agreement and to present a long-term agreement to town meeting next spring. Doing so would allow the school budget to move forward without severe cuts, that is, no physi, for example, no physical education offered at the high school, freshman sports, to name a few. And it would assure that the regional agreement is negotiated properly. In addition, by adhering to the recommended Madden budget limitations, specifically a 5% yearly assessment increase to the schools, the board would prevent an unpredicted financial burden to the town. I understand that this is a complex situation and you are in a tough spot, but children should not be punished because of a contractual issue among adults. For these reasons, I more respectfully ask you to compromise during this difficult time. And as signed, Sean Kane, 31, Forester. Okay, Frank?
Yep.
It's up to you. The budget review.
I think there was a request for information on the Community Preservation Act. So at this point, I'd like to invite Lisa to provide you with her comments and I'm going to mute.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Lisa.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. As you know, we have an article on the warrant for town meeting. It's article number six, asking town meeting to accept Sections 3 to 7, inclusive of Chapter 44B of the General Laws, which is the Community Preservation Act. Under that, if town meeting were to accept Article 6, the measure would then move to the ballot for the November presidential election, which I believe is November 3rd. If the Community Preservation Act passes on the ballot, wording in the article notes that the surcharge against the annual real estate tax levy would commence in fiscal year 2021. There is a, a problem with that date as the election is in November. If, if this were to pass in November, it's going to give our town resources a very short window to prepare all the necessary documentation, update our taxing software, provide residents with notice. And it's not feasible to commence this in the year of fiscal 2021. So I'm proposing that on the floor of town meeting, an amendment be offered to provide commencement of in fiscal year 2021, which would be July 1 of 2021. So it would be actually fiscal year 2022 for commencement of the Surcharge Preservation Act. And I'm asking the board just for their approval and authorization to go, go ahead and propose that amendment on the town floor at town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Lisa, does anyone have any questions of Lisa about the, the change of effective date?
Lisa, could you refresh my memory on the percentage? What is the, the one that you're going after?
Yes, we are going for the 1%. We are also proposing that the town accept the $100,000 exemption off the assessment for the valuation of the property. We are also going to ask to accept the additional exemption for seniors and low income. So there'll be three exemptions that we will ask for, but basically it's going to be the 1% surcharge.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Frank, anything else on the budget review?
He's muted himself. I, whatever I have will probably be covered in the discussion for the annual town meeting. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Yes, Justin?
I just want to say, I also received an email from a parent about the school budget, although I'll label it public comment. I just want to confirm that. I forwarded to you Carl and he asked that the rest of the board be notified. So either you or I could forward it to the rest.
Um, fine, I, you know, I can't recall if I did, I, did I forward it to you guys? From this, right? No, okay. Justin, will you take care of that?
Yeah, I'll take care of it. I just didn't want to begin a discussion outside of open meeting.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, Kyle, does, does Lisa need an action on her proposal?
No, she, she talked about offering amendments to the town meeting.
Alright, she, she doesn't need a, we can do that on town hall floor.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't believe we need to do anything right now. Under new business, got a lot of ringing going on.
Oh, Justin sent an email out.
Yeah, Justin, you're a little bit too fast. Under new business, request for the Whitman Middle School Building Committee Board members. We've received a request from the, the schools to, to name, to name someone. John Galvin has, has earlier volunteered by, by email to, to us that he would like to serve on that. I'd like it to make it official and have us name him as a representative from Whitman to the WMS Building Committee. Are there any selectmen that are interested in being on that committee? They didn't ask specifically for a selectman, however, it's our building, so I think it would be appropriate for someone of, he or she, if he wanted to serve. Justin?
So that was my question is, did they ask for selectmen? I thought I remembered.
Actually, they, they did not.
No.
They did not, but I notified Lisa, Michelle, that I would be bringing forward a selectman after tonight's meeting.
Is there anyone who would like to volunteer to be on that building committee?
Maybe not.
Randy, were you putting up your hand?
If Justin doesn't want it, I'll definitely volunteer.
I'm currently on the, the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, which I think will be a significant amount of time in the coming months, so.
But we can only hope, we can only hope, Justin. Good, why don't we send, why don't we send Randy's name then, Frank?
Okay. Alright, Mr. Chair, I would nominate John Galvin for the Whitman Middle School Building Committee.
Oh, okay, I thought I just did, but that's alright. Will someone like to second that?
I'll second that.
Alright. Well, we might, we might as well, why don't we vote both, and I'll nominate Randy as our representative.
And I'll say, before you vote.
So we can, we can vote on both of them.
Before you vote? May I suggest that you also name our building commissioner, Robert Curran, and the assistant town administrator, Lisa Green, to that group.
Sure. Everybody alright with that?
Oh, yeah.
Would somebody like to make it a formal motion?
I'll make that motion. I would nominate Bob Curran and Lisa Green to the Whitman Middle School.
And there's, does everyone second?
I'll second it, Dan.
Any, anyone else? Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
David, Daniel, I keep seeing David. Daniel?
Yes.
Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Kyle.
Burlo.
Well, whatever, Kyle.
Yeah, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is to take action to rescind the appointment of Sheila Salvucci on the position of associate member of the Board of Appeals. Is there a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second, Brian.
Okay, Dan, you are making the appointment to, to rescind Sheila Salvucci's, from the, from the Board of Appeals. Okay, that's, that's good. Anybody have any discussion? Justin? We'll vote. Yes, Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll, and I'll vote yes. Take action to rescind the appointment of Barbara Garvey from the AAA Advisory Committee and as Assistant Deputy Director to Senior Citizens, WEMA.
So moved, Dan.
Second, Brian.
Discussion? Okay.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Take action to rescind the appointment of Stephen Santos from the position of member of the Whitman Cultural Council, Cultural Council. Is there a motion?
Dan?
You're a second.
Second, Brian.
Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes also. I'd like to announce the following Board Committee vacancies. On the AAA Advisory Committee, one alternate delegate vacancy and the term will go until 2022. The Board of Appeals, one associate member, and the vacancy will go until 2022. Building Facilities and Capital Expenditures Committee, there are two vacancies for 2021 and 2022. Conservation Commission, two vacancies, 2022. Two alternate member vacancies, 2021 and 2023. Economic Development Committee, one vacancy at large, 2023. One vacancy planning board rep, 2023. Fair Housing Committee, one vacancy, 2021. Historical Commission, one associate member vacancy, 2022. Recreation Commission, one non-voting member vacancy, 2022. And Whitman Cultural Council, four vacancies, three for 2021 and one for 2022. Lot of openings. Just contact, if you're interested, contact the Selectmen's Office, please. Like to vote, now a motion to, I'd like a motion to vote to authorize the town accountant to sign a request for reimbursement from the Plymouth County for COVID expenditures.
Dan, motion, motion.
Is there a second? Brian, anything you want to say about that, Frank?
Yeah, just that we, we've been pooling our collective purchases. Fire Department has been tracking them into a worksheet and our accountant is reviewing all of the requests for appropriateness and documentation. So it seemed logical that it would be better for Ken to sign off on that than me because he'll be more familiar with the purchases.
Anyone, anyone want to ask Frank anything about that? Okay, we'll vote then. Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
And I, and I'll vote yes also. Town meeting warrant amendments, Frank?
Yes, initially I had requested of council to review whether or not it would be permissible to withdraw the current town meeting document and post a new one. While we couldn't find anything that says we couldn't, it's never been done. And Michelle is of the opinion that the better way to handle it is to make amendments on the floor of town meeting. And my primary goal in doing that was actually to replace the language in the warrant that says that our recommended amendment to the regional district agreement was unfiled with the clerk and actually print it in the warrant. I've come up with an alternative. I'm going to print a copy and attach it to the warrant. So we no longer need to do that. The only thing we do need to do is to vote to change the time of our meeting from 7:30 PM to 6:00 PM on July 27th. And there were two considerations for that. One, it's outdoor. Two, lighting's going to be an issue and again, it's outdoor. So we'd like to start early in order to give people a chance to get through the business and get out of the hole before.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to change the, the time to 6 o'clock?
I'll make that motion, Dan.
I'll second that.
Okay, anyone have discussion on that?
Is that going to make it difficult for some people to attend, coming home from work? It's on a Monday night, right?
Yeah, we, we talked about that with the moderator and there, it, it may provide some people with a decision whether or not they want to leave early to make town meeting. But the sense was that people have been generally pretty available at that time of night. And we're concerned about the health and safety of the people that would be attending that meeting. We are going to treat the field that morning through Plymouth County mosquito. And I'm going to provide cans of off at the check-in tables for people to treat themselves. But we have had noted the presence, not in our immediate area, but in the general area of the South Shore for both Tripoli and West Nile. So it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to let it run late into the night when that's the prime time for mosquitoes.
Will the board of selectmen be meeting it then again at 5:30? Brian, did a meeting?
If we, if the board feels it's necessary to meet before the meeting, sure, but you'll be meeting outside.
Yeah.
How does the board feel about having the meeting, a meeting at 5:30?
I have no problem.
Or not?
We usually do meet before town meeting for a half hour, so it's.
And, and what do we accomplish at that meeting usually?
Not much, probably.
You never can, you never can tell, my, my, I show up, you know, at that time, but.
Right.
What do you, what do you guys want to do? Break tradition and not have a meeting like before town meeting?
I think Randy has a comment.
Randy, I'm sorry.
Well, also about the time, Dan, I, I think by the calendar, I think sunset's at 8:05 and there's no lights on that field, so. On, on July 27th, I think it's down for the sunset at 8:05, so I think starting early is in the vicinity.
Okay, do you have any feelings about whether or not we have a meeting at 5:30?
Well, it works for me. We can meet in my car.
To have a meeting or not to have a meeting?
And we can have a meeting if you like, yes.
I'm not pushing it, I just.
You don't want to break tradition?
Can I make a suggestion? If we find it necessary to have a meeting, then we'll post it the Wednesday before the meeting.
Excellent, that sounds good to me. So the, so the vote is, the vote is going to be, yes, Brian?
Just one question. Can you refresh my memory and for the folks at home, the location of this meeting, which field it's going to be at?
Yes, it will, the meeting will be at the University Ball Field, which, when you enter the high school property at the southernmost entrance, you drive up past the football field and some open areas. And then on your left, there's a fenced-in field with a gate. That's where the checkers will be placed to bring people in for the meeting. And the meeting will be held on that field closer to the, I can't shut this damn thing down. Closer to the, what do they call that, the press box? I think it's the press box. That's where the head of the meeting, the stage area will be. It'll be set up like it is for graduation. In fact, the setup we use on Monday, and if God forbid rain on Tuesday, is the same setting that Hansen will use on Wednesday and the high school will use for graduation. So it's certainly a.
Now, Frank, you say the southernmost entrance, is that the main entrance?
Yes.
That's the main entrance?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I would consider the main entrance. I don't know if it's designated.
And where, and the parking will be, like we'll say, to the right of the school where the teachers park?
There are parking areas above the field area that, which would be probably the lower end of the regular parking area, which is a short walk to the field. There are also parking spaces along the drive as you come in. There will also be handicap parking and those areas will be marked so that those who are handicapped won't have to make a long hike to get to the meeting field.
Okay. Okay, Brian?
Yeah, just trying to be the devil's advocate, I guess, and what Randy brought up about the sunset at 8:05 with no lights on that field and the uncertainty of this town meeting potentially could be arduous. Would that push it into a second night because of the fact that there's no, I mean, there are other fields that, that we have down that have lights on them.
There will be, oh, we can't use the field with the lights because that's a football field and it will damage our warranty on the turf. But there will be portable lights. We won't be in the dark. I just don't think you're going to want to sit there after the sun sets and it's, it's dusk and then dark and you're working with a couple of lights on generators. It just doesn't seem to be a really good mix, which is why we're trying to start early. It just doesn't seem to be a really good mix, which is why we're trying to start early to see if we can get through the process.
Bring a spray.
I think, I think the, the, the items that are going to generate the most discussion are going to be the assessment on the high school and the question of the, of the regional agreement and perhaps a discussion on the middle school feasibility study. But other than those three things, the agenda is going to be fairly non-controversial. I'm going to try and display. I don't know if it'll work, but if I can locate it. This, no, it's not working. They gave me a miniature sized layout of the field and it, it's not, it's not going to work, but it's halfway up the driveway.
It's the base.
It'll be marked.
Justin, will we be able to utilize the electronic voting that we've done at the last couple of town meetings?
No. That will not be available primarily because, well, the, the ability to run power is going to be limited to the main phase power that's going to be on the stage and the devices have a limited reach. The, we talked with the moderator about it and he's pretty sure that that would not be a helpful way to do things. We're going to have colored cards that people can raise to vote with if we have to do standing counts.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, I believe, to change the time to six o'clock. Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, and we'll decide if we need a meeting at, at 5:30 the week before. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Hanson Town Meeting Warrant. I think you've been, you've been supplied with a copy of the annual town meeting warrant that just came out the other day for Hanson. And it's an interesting article, actually Article 23, which has caught some people's attention. And it's to see if they want to apply for a home rule petition that would change the, the way that we assess or that would make the original agreements means of assessment for each town. In other words, strictly by percentage of pupils or students for the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. I don't know what to say about it. I thought that we should have it on the agenda just to make sure everybody knew about it. It will be, they placed it on their warrant. I don't recall frankly, any discussion of it at a Hanson Board of Selectmen meeting. I don't recall there being a discussion of that at the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District meeting. It just sort of showed up, but it will be on their warrant. I did speak to the town council about it. It was, it was puzzling to me that, that one town could by a home rule petition constrain another town or impede upon the, what seems to be the, the function of a school committee. But I was, I was counseled by counsel to that there isn't any, there isn't a constraint for someone to apply for a home rule petition, petition like that. But that the, the likelihood of that kind of thing being passed by the legislature is, is probably dim. What I was, what was suggested to me is that we wait to see what happens at their town meeting. They may not, they may not pass it. If they don't pass it, have to do anything. If they do pass it, then we'll need to, to probably deal with some sort of a campaign to try to thwart it.
Well, we would, Carl, we would reach out to our rep in the General Court, Representative Sullivan, to, to represent our interest in whatever's presented.
If they, if it's passed by the town meeting. There is some possibility that it may not make it to the, the warrant may, that article may not actually make it to town meeting, but we, we don't know. It's just a few things here, so. I think we'd, we'd actually would go beyond our own, our own rep and our own senator, which I think we would, it would be incumbent upon us that were to, to pass the Hanson Town Meeting to get in touch with all of the representatives and senators that, that would be voting on it. But I don't know if anyone has any further thoughts on it. I'm not sure how much we have to discuss tonight.
Just, just, I wanted to share that this, I mean, to me seems like a, like a hail Mary shot without the school committee having weighed in, without Desi weighing in, one party supporting it, just it does not seem likely to pass through the legislature. And if it somehow gets through the House, Mike Brady represents both towns in the state senate. I can't imagine he would be thrilled to support this.
No, well, no, I don't know if it's a hail Mary. Frank, I think Frank described it as a shot across the bow. Really this week, it's more like a shot through the bow than, than across the bow. Randy?
All right.
You really want to get me going, don't you, Carl?
Hold on a second. So I guess what I'm going to say is why has it come to this? I, I think that, that's the root of our problem, that this, this situation, unfortunately, the narrative has, has not been about the, the, how we got into the problem, but how the two towns are going to deal with the position that the school committee's in, in action, how that their inaction has, has now caused an infighting between the two towns that seems to be taking over. As, as you know, Carl, I've done quite a bit of homework on this and as I was trying to put together probably a year and a half of puzzle pieces last night. As I'm organizing notes from public video, from public documents, that, that puzzle to me was not getting any clearer. And if you look at what, what could have happened when this was brought to light, late August, early September at the school committee level, we've yet to see any admission of, of their wrongdoing. They have yet to take ownership of a mistake that the previous administration and a person who has since signed a, a nondisclosure and we can't talk about. And thanks to Lisa Green and people like Fred Small, we now have documents that have signatures and information regarding the statutory method. It, it's troubling that the narrative now is Whitman's evil, we're picking the pockets of the town of Hanson. The people of Hanson are now looking to break up the district. And unfortunately, the school committee now steps back and says it's your problem. You deal with it. And there's a group out there is we should pay more, we should pay more because just keep paying and, and they just, they just want their money. And you know, I, I recently saw a, a Facebook post where it says something about using the students as pawns in this game or, or something like that. You know, I feel like that's what's being done to us at this point. Take some ownership. If the school committee, if this budget fails this year, it is not because of the boards of selectmen from either town. I've said this from the beginning, I don't blame the town of Hanson. If we sit here and say we did not know about this issue, how can we blame them? We cannot blame the town of Hanson. They benefited in a flawed process that clearly hurt us. Plain and simple. School committee needs to take some ownership. If this budget fails, it's on them. It's not on the boards. And, and personally, as we move on later in the evening, you, you will speak, you will hear me speak probably regarding having the Attorney General look into this because with the information I know we all have at this point, there, there is a, a clear, I, I would use the word almost malfeasance. Ignorance no longer applies in this case. There's documents that, that clearly discuss the statutory method and clearly have signatures of former employees on them. So this is the root. If, if we should have a discord and talking about breaking up of the region, I, I don't blame this board and I don't blame the board in Hanson. I, I think if we were put in the same position, we'd be fighting tooth and nail too. But we shouldn't have to pay anymore. We, we, we've paid. And we're offering a good deal. And now it's time for the school committee to take some ownership of this.
Well, thank you, Randy. Does anyone have any comment? Justin?
Just that, um, thank you, Randy, and, and I also have been involved in this for, for many months now. It seems like the entire time I've been on this board has been dealing with this singular issue. You know, just trying to, to see a pragmatic way to fund the schools for next year. Together with the board, members of the Board of Selectmen in Hanson, we reached a tentative agreement on a one-year fix. Brought it back to the regional agreement amendment committee. It kind of flopped out of there when each person's memory of the agreement didn't quite up. The school committee voted nine to one to adopt what at least was my recollection of the agreement going into the regional agreement amendment committee. And then our board voted to support the same amendment, three to two. I've not heard from anyone in Hanson other than we don't want to deal with next year going full statutory, any sort of proposals, but at this point, it's posted on our website publicly. It would be difficult to amend it and if both towns don't pass the same budget with the same amendment, using the same formula, we're going to 1/12th and pink slips start going out. The pink slip is already out, but teachers don't return to school when school starts if this doesn't all get through. So the, the consequences are real and immediate. I just urge everyone to deal with the problems immediately in front of us. And if there are disagreements about next year, hold them for next year. We don't have, this is not amending the entire agreement. It's the funding method. There are other problems with the regional agreement that Desi implores us to fix, things that aren't in line with state or federal law that need to change. So this dialogue's not over, but we need to fund the schools for late August.
I, I couldn't agree with you more, Justin. Anyone else?
Well, I, I'd have to piggyback on that, that also that what needs to be made clear, and, and this is another problem I have, is that unfortunately, at the school committee level, this process has never been properly explained. And we keep on talking about amending a regional agreement. Well, if we should put another alternative method into that agreement, the statutory method is still in there. So that's, that's part of this that's getting overlooked and I think people are missing. I, I don't think people properly understand that they keep talking about, well, we'll come to a compromise. Well, even if there is another alternative method put in that agreement, the statutory method, as it should have been in there, and a town should have an opportunity to, year after year, will still be in there. The towns have the ultimate say, and I think that's the root of our problem and, and why we should all be pretty upset is that we never did get to make that vote.
Thank you, Randy. Dan, you have, you've had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, just to make it clear, the town of Whitman, and I believe the finance committee agreed to pay what Hanson, with, with the women Hanson school system is looking for, the 55-plus million dollars for their budget. It's all, their argument is, is they, they feel that it should be through the statutory method and, and the amount that Whitman should pay and Hanson should pay. We back this Whitman-Hanson schools for their full budget of 55-plus million. It's just the formula on which we pay our portion. And that's where I stand. I support the schools, town of Whitman supports the schools for what they're looking for. It's just, I don't support the 50-50. I support full statutory, as everybody knows, because we have done our best over the years. And I thoroughly believe that if we, the town of Whitman would not be in the situation that it's in now if in fact, we were going with the right method that we thought we were going with and that was being reported by the schools. And that we all thought we were going with that statutory method, but we weren't. So I, I, I think, you know, we wouldn't be in the situation, financial situation that we were in last year and then this year. I mean, so as I say, the town of Whitman supports the school's budget, full budget. It's just the way we want to pay our legal portion of the budget. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Brian?
Yeah, I, I think that what we need to remember in the, in the citizens going into town meeting, need to be aware of is that we have, over the years, the last few years, been accused of not supporting education the way we should, when in fact, we were way over what we should have been paying. And I, you know, I've heard this figure, that figure, somewhere between three and five million dollars. Imagine what we could do if we had an extra three or five million dollars in, in our coffers right now. You know, we've been talking for fifteen years about a DBW. If it came down and, and saw that the, the way that building is, we'd be working somewhere else. And, you know, we, we're, every year we're scraping and pinching and asking our managers to squeeze every last penny out of every corner of their office. And all along, we've been schnooking. And, you know, I think someone has to be held liable for that, as Randy said, and you know, much like what we count on Frank to give us and Lisa to give us information. And we have to trust that they're giving us the best information at the time. I think that was kind of a lot of the newer members of the school committee were trusting people to give them information that was bogus. And, and I think we need to find out where that stemmed from and, and end this once and for all because the, all this finger pointing between this board, Hanson's Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and it might not have been any of them. And, and if the sad point is, we paid much more than we should have and it would be great if we had it now. And we just have to chalk it up to make sure this never happens again. But the people who are voting on this number need to remember what they've already paid.
Thank you, Brian. Randy, I'm going to speak first before I give you a chance to, to do it again.
All right.
What we have to, what we, what we have to keep in mind, folks, is that it's, it's, we can stamp our feet in righteous indignation at the way we've been carrying Hanson for the last number of years. Because of mistakes that were made by the school administration and school committee as far as the way the assessments were allotted. We can do that. We can feel good about that. We can say it'd be great to have that money now. Hanson was basically living on, on, on us for a number of years. However, that is not going to do the school department any good this year. It's going to be difficult for Hanson to translate its, its operations into the full statutory method next year. What I like about the, our amendment to the regional agreement is that we guarantee if it's passed by both towns and if the 55-million-dollar budget is passed by both towns, that next year it's full statutory agreement. If we have to pay a little bit more this year in the 50-50 compromise in order to encourage Hanson to vote the school's budget, I think we, I think we ought to do it. It doesn't do any good to say you support the 55-million-dollar budget if you know that by stamping your foot and saying, I want the, I want the statutory agreement this year, that no one in Hanson is going to vote for that. That we can guarantee that the state will take over the, the schools and it'll be a, a different situation for them. I really think that the only way this, if the schools are going to survive, they need to survive this year, and we need to, we need to bite the apple one more time and help them. My opinion. Randy?
You kind of stole my thunder there, Carl.
That's why I spoke first. That's why I spoke first, Randy.
What I'm going to say is, Dan, you're not wrong. Brian, you're not wrong. Our finance committee is not wrong. Carl is not wrong. It's two different paths. If you wanted to look at this strictly from a financial standpoint. then you go with the, the FinCom's recommendation. Uh, as I, as I was furious last night, and, and I'll tell you, I was thinking about in this meeting, I would be calling to reconsider the school vote. I, I, I was that upset. And, uh, luckily, I went to my rock, my wife, and, and she said, well, would you feel happy doing that? And no, because I, I, you know what? I do think the budget, personally, the fifty-fifty compromise gives the kid the best, kids the best chance of success. Gives, i- i- is upset as I am with the school and the school committee right now, i- i- it is about the kids. And it's about giving them the best opportunity, or best chance at success. Whether or not this passes, like I said, I'm not gonna blame this board, I'm not gonna blame myself. I would blame myself if I didn't give it that opportunity to, to.
I have a question for Frank.
And, uh, the, the last thing I'll say tonight is the reason why I'm pushing, uh, thi- this issue regarding the assessment and, uh, I, I believe, you know, the inaction on it. Uh, for myself, I think we were all voted, uh, to our positions. Granted, we're gonna make missteps, none of us are personally experts, we're, we're, we're not professionals in government, but the town voted us to be accountable. And, and that's why I think, uh, that's what they expect of us, and that's why I think, uh, w- this needs to be looked into. Because if we can offer nothing else, we should at least be able to offer accountability.
Okay, tha- thank you, Randy. Uh, Dan, you had a question for Frank?
Yeah, for Frank. Now, Frank, if our town meeting votes the fifty-fifty plan for this year and then full statutory next year, it's obvious that Hanson doesn't want that. They wanna go back to the old alternative method. I mean, you're, it's, it's clear of what the, the Board of Selectmen, uh, in Hanson, what they're doing. It's clear. That being said, if they're not pushing the fifty-fifty, they may say, yeah, that's good, that's the best we're gonna get, but they're certainly not pushing it to their taxpayers. If that's the case, and they push it so it's voted down, the next time we vote, can we change our vote and say, okay, we're going full statutory?
If the budget is rejected, and by that, I mean if both towns haven't approved the assessment that was presented by the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, then the budget has been rejected. You're free to seek and vote on whatever budget is then presented. I, I just, I wanna underscore something that, that Randy and Brian said a little earlier. The, the, the responsibility here is shared, but you have to remember that the towns in Whitman and Hanson have relied on the school districts to assess based on what's required under the statute. Every regional school district in Massachusetts has the responsibility to assess and determine the method of assessment. And, and the real failure here is not having provided the opportunity for the towns to understand and vote for an assessment they felt was appropriate. And that failure squarely in the laps of the school committee. They have all the Desi access they needed, get all of the reports that they need to prepare the assessments. And, and we have typically sat here relying on them to present to us, this is what's required. And while it may have been under our agreement, it hasn't been since two thousand seven, and nobody knew it. And nobody knew it because the people responsible presenting that was under property.
I can answer, I can answer your question, Dan. If this goes to a super town meeting, the only that can be voted is a statutory assessment.
Right. Okay, Frank, on Article Two, when the school budget is presented, and it's fifty-five million and change, the number that Whitman's responsible for, is that gonna be the number as the statutory method or the fifty-fifty method?
Well, it depends on what town meeting supports. The board is presenting the budget.
What I'm saying is, when the FinCom, you know how you, 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 you look at our number? Right? We're gonna support the fifty-five-million-plus budget for the school. Now, when it comes.
No, Dan, that, that's not what I'm saying. The fifty-five is unquestionably the budget. The question is, what is our assessment?
Right, now, they're gonna put the statutory number or the fifty-fifty number in Article Two?
Both are going to be on the floor, and the townspeople will have to decide which one was.
Okay.
The, this, uh, Dan, it's very simple. The selectmen voted to present the figure that, uh, that appears in the fifty-fifty, whatever you wanna call it, compromise. That's what the selectmen voted. The majority of the selectmen voted that. That's what the selectmen, that's what the selectmen support. The finance committee, the finance committee doesn't recommend that.
Right.
So, it becomes, it becomes, it becomes a choice of the town meeting, which, uh, advice they wanna take.
But normally, we vote on the FinCom's recommendation, and if there is a, um, an amended that number, that's when we put in the lower number. Is that how it's gonna go, Frank?
No, uh, the FinCom hasn't voted that number yet. But if they're going to do what they've stated they're going to do, the number that will appear in the final draft for Article Two will be a statutory assessment number.
Right.
Um, or a statutory funding number. We don't assess, we simply vote the sum of money.
So, you're gonna have to put an amendment on the floor?
No, both are there. It's Article Two, Dan. The, the moderator will read whatever the recommended number from the finance committee is.
Right.
If the board is, is firm in its position that we want to enter into disagreement, then that discussion has to happen, and the move to amend the amount to be funded would be to the amount requested by the school and the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. If town meeting votes to go with the full statutory number, does that mean that just throws, we pass over Article Seven?
No. No, not at all. I, I suspect, and I'm sure that I'll have an opportunity to talk to Michelle about this before the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Going to be likely, in order for us to properly vote an assessment, I would think that we'd have to take the regional agreement out of order. Vote the regional agreement, and then vote the assessment. But that's all gonna depend on what the meeting's support is for funding.
Okay. Just preparing my notes.
Everybody clear?
Yeah.
Okay. That exhausts new business, old business. Carlton Street Extension.
Um, I did receive an update, the, uh, there was a speed study done and traffic study by our police department. Unfortunately, the study only reflected one direction, and they wanna do the other side as well. But the conclusion from the study is, in the, um, eight or eleven days that, that they were counting cars, only one vehicle exceeded, reached or exceeded forty miles an hour. The balance of them were between the speed limit and maybe thirty-four miles an hour. So, clearly, it's an issue of perception. We wanna get the counts coming the other way to determine if there is a problem, or if that problem can be fixed by either making the street one way or, uh, addressing it in other methods. But we should have that study probably in another week or so.
Okay. Anyone have any, any questions about that? We're still working on the Carlton Street Extension issue. Annual town meeting, Frank, or is there something you wanted to say about it?
I, I think we covered it.
Pretty much. We, we changed, we changed the time. We talked about bugs, talked about light, talked about where we're gonna park. Okay. Simple recycling?
It's gonna be Lisa, so let me mute myself.
All right.
Okay, um, Mr. Chair and members of the board, um, Simply recyclable, like the, recycling is our bag program, uh, textile recycling. We have been on board with this program since December of twenty eighteen. Um, the program has been very successful. And to date, um, we have recycled thirty-seven-point-seven tons of textiles through the Pink Bag Program. Due to COVID-nineteen, as you, you know, the recycling was suspended for a little while, and then it came back on board. They have since asked that they be released from the contractual obligation to pay us one penny per pound um, due to the trouble, the, uh, the economic trouble and, um, hardships they're, um, experiencing due to the COVID-nineteen. Uh, they still wish to continue the program with the town of Whitman and, and pick up the pink bags with, uh, textile recyclings, yet not pay a penny a pound. In the packet that you reserved from Lori, um, there was some information, there's a spreadsheet that shows the amount of textiles that have been collected through the last year and a half. Uh, basically, they have paid us six hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents total. But actually, when we compare that to the disposal cost that we saved, to that, we're, we're charged per ton, we actually have saved two thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-four cents in tonnage, um, disposal fees um, for this program. So, it is turning out to be very beneficial for the town to continue this program. Um, I don't think we're losing a whole lot by, um, not having to pay them a penny a pound. It's not a lot, it's not a great deal of money. Uh, but in the long run, it does help, uh, keep textiles out of our landfills. Um, these do go to, um, good use as recycled. Um, they are, any, um, articles are donated to consignment shops, um, they do sell some of them, and then articles that aren't, uh, worthy of either, they, um, recycle them and make rags and things like that. So, I, I recommend that the board okay and approve, um, us to discontinue paying Simply Recycling a penny per pound, but yet, um, continue the program in Whitman with the pink bags, um, because it is beneficial to us.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, Lisa?
Yeah, Lisa, so you're saying we're getting, we're getting nothing for that, we're just, but we're saving on tonnage that we don't have to bury the cost?
That's correct.
Brian?
Um, are they going to still be providing free of cost the pink bags?
Yes, th- there's still not gonna be any cost to the town for the program, so we'll still get the pink bags at no charge.
The, um, one observation I had was on those numbers, is if we didn't sign that program, the thirty, thirty-eight ones almost, um, would, I would assume not all of that would have gone into the trash, because people, um, might be using it for convenience, and otherwise would have put it in goodwill or somewhere else, um, for, uh, you know, some charities or anything to, um, help them out there, so, um, you know, I would assume it's still a savings, but probably not, um, a hundred percent of what, what that tonnage is, but it's still, anything that would defray costs for us to put things in the ground, which is, in my estimation, the wrong way to do any of it, uh, uh, it's still a good thing.
Okay, this, you're not asking for any action tonight on this, are you? You're just giving us information, right, Lisa?
Um, no, I believe we do need a vote from the board to, um, release the contractual obligation to, to, for us to be paid a penny per pound by Simply Recycling.
Okay, I'll make them, I'll make that motion.
Brian, second.
Okay, any, any questions of Lisa? Any discussions?
Yeah, Lisa, in the future, is it possible that we could go back a penny a pound? If they find that there'll be selling, they're making a, there's a market for it?
Absolutely, anything is possible, yes.
I want that to be left open.
One else? Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And, and I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to go into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty-one A, uh, Exception Three, to discuss strategy with respect to co- to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
There is a second. Okay, we'll take a vote, we'll take a, uh, voice vote. Uh, Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, and we will, uh, not be coming back into open session after the executive session, so if someone would like to, uh, move to adjourn the open session?
Uh, motion?
Second, Brian.
Okay, uh, Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And, and I'll vote yes. We will be in executive session within, uh, the next five minutes.
Thank you.